Did you go to the chamber? I didn't know because I can't see all the animals.
I mean, we, I don't know if it's going tile there, but that's a surface.
I guess I don't like the smell of.
Just that.
The what?
Just a lot of.
Okay.
There's some I don't.
Yeah.
You know, some, but I.
Neighbor.
I think it's my. Wasn't in the city.
I'm sure not.
Just give imagine another.
There was no primary.
Yeah, more opportunity for people, big guy complaints to.
The spirit gets dirty today. The bar down there, he was always a good poetry.
Oh.
Actually, that day was last time I seen was in that library on the bricks when they passed them thousand books. He wrote a poem that day and he was on option. I guess they found him in this apartment.
Oh, you do see that already?
Yeah, I saw.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Were you walking on the bike path yesterday, Rich?
Uh, no.
I was playing golf and I felt like someone was kind of creeping. They were like, wait, they waved.
You figured it was rich?
They waved and they walked by, then they came back and we waved again, like trying to say hello.
No, but I'm gonna go out of my way now.
I was like, the only person I could think of that it might be that. Oh, there's Courtney on the golf course, but then you maybe walk on the bike path and I thought.
Truly up the game then?
No, actually, I don't.
I drive a red Jeep if you see me sitting outside.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning. What are you snickering about?
All the creeping comments. I meant that in a nice way.
I know.
Nobody usually.
I know. Goes to that much effort, yeah.
We call this meeting into order. First, we need an approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added and deleted?
I'll make a motion through the agenda as presented.
I'll say.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of Monday, May sixteen, twenty twenty-two minutes. I read them. They were short. I want a promotion to.
And I'll second that. You beat me to it.
There's been a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
It almost got it one sentence.
Right. First item on the agenda is City of Manning Trail Funding Request. You wanna come up?
We're even set in Scott's chair. I think I actually, there's some papers.
Oh, you got them all ready just.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Thanks for understanding. Last week with sick kids, I'm sure you've all done that.
Yes.
Um, wanted to touch base about a project that we hope to do down in the corner of the county. Um, I think you had in your packets. Oh, you have. So, um, look at that. I don't even have to worry about it, but if you don't, I did bring it with, um, basically, there's a. The county park has, um, a trail around the lake. The city has about a one point seven million dollar trail system that we've worked on over the last probably eight, ten years. Um, and we want to connect the two. Right now, you can get there, but you have to be, you have to know that you can go through the driveway of the hospital and then you take gravel from there. So it's not the safest way to get there, um, but you can get there, but we want to make that better. So, um, it's about a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar project. This, um, this is examples of the different trails that we've done in town, um, so far. The blue is, basically, we try to take local money and leverage it as much as humanly possible. So the blue is state and federal money. Um, the orange bar is foundation money, um, and local grants, and then the gray is what I would call local money. Um, so we, that's how we've done the one point seven, almost one point eight million dollars worth of trail so far, is getting a little bit of local money and then leveraging the heck out of it. So I'm here today to ask if the county would be willing to partner on this next chunk that connects to Great Western. Only about half of this is in city limits, but I think it's an important piece and the city will take the lead on it. We'll write the grants, we'll administer it, like we'll do, do it same as we would in town or completely in town trail. Um, and we'll get majority of the funding, but I'm, I'm here today to ask for, if you guys would be willing to kick in to start that local funding piece so that we can take that and leverage it. There's a couple grants we're eyeing. Um, State Rec is one of them. Reap is one of them. Reap is a much smaller one, so we would have to break it into two chunks if we're gonna do that. Um, so I guess the question is, would you be willing to contribute anything towards this? And if so, could it be kind of an open-ended to this project not to match a specific grant? Because if we don't get one, I'd like to roll forward and ask for the second one. See what I mean?
So how many grants you gonna ask for? Two, you say?
For sure, two. Well, not necessarily. If State Rec comes around, then we'll, then we'll, if State Rec can pay for seventy-five percent of that project, which is a good chunk of this one. Um, and we would ask for the full, we would ask to do the whole project. If we can get seventy-five percent of the whole project, we'll find the other twenty-five. I mean, quite honestly. Um, and then we would probably turn back to local opportunities like Timmerman, Community Foundation, things like that to help fund that other twenty-five percent. Um, so if we get State Rec, then we just go to local. You're probably looking at three, maybe four, maybe a well mark, throw a well mark in there. Um, so that's a hard question. If we get reap, then we're gonna have to do reap two times plus throw all the locals in there to get, to get the full three hundred and sixty thousand. So we're just gonna have to work it.
So what is your request?
Um, whatever you're willing to give. I'd like to ask for ten percent, but I feel like that's a little bit, um, that may be a little rich considering, you know, it's not budgeted.
And the city is putting how much in?
Whatever we have to. So we fundraise constantly. Um, and then every once in a while, the council takes some money out of lost and throws it over to the trail fund to use to leverage more and more and more. So the entire trail system started with a Knowles bequest of twenty thousand dollars. And the council said, if you can turn twenty thousand dollars into a trail, go for it. And we did. And then we just keep doing that. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking to do. Have re-replenish our seed money or, and then this is our next one.
So this, if we would give money, is that just contingency on a leverage or is it just giving money?
I think you would say that the money that you're giving is specifically for this segment.
I see that segment continued on the, on the major grants.
So yeah, this segment.
So we, we, just all we do, we're just promising if you get the grant, we're gonna kick in.
Yep. Yep. And honestly, if we can get enough leverage, if we, if we have that, but then we could get, say, the state grant and then well mark, then we say, hey, thanks for the leverage. Turns out, we don't need it.
Yeah.
We'll call you next time. Thanks. But like going into it, we have to have something. Yeah.
You're awful positive.
We, we've got one. But if you look at,
Yeah.
you know, our local contribution on one point seven million is eighty-eight thousand dollars. People like to fund grants or like to fund trails.
Trails right now are pretty, pretty hot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And someday they're gonna be cold, but in the meantime, let's get what we can get.
Are you looking at the destination Iowa, right?
We are, um, not for trails though. Destination Iowa needs to be a draw to the state is what they're saying. They're saying it's, you are getting people to come from out of state to town, and I don't know that this carries that much versus State Rec trails. I mean, we're gonna be competing with really big projects on that Destination Iowa money versus State Rec trails.
So you got, you got, you got something else in mind there?
We do. I'm actually, that, so there's the housing subdivision project that we're working on, and there is a piece of Destination Iowa that is, um, that housing can be a part of. And so we're looking to that pocket neighborhood. I don't know if you've heard about this or not. So that pocket neighborhood, um, we feel like is a differentiator. It's something different. There's two in Iowa, Grinnell and Makokada, and we hope to be the third. And so we're looking for Destination Iowa to be that, that that can draw people that are looking to move to Iowa, that it's a different housing stock than Iowa currently offers. So yes, we are gonna apply for Destination Iowa, but it's very different, a different piece.
So you're saying you would like to have ten percent, that's what you're saying?
If, yeah, if you're willing. Any bit helps, any bit helps. And more than anything, it shows.
Is that ten percent of three hundred and sixty thousand or is that ten percent of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand?
You pick.
I mean, I'm gonna say I do have a problem. I, I'm a, aim on far as numbers, and you better have your opt to return the information.
Gotcha.
There's so a couple mistakes there. Just, I, that's just. Well, I mean, that really digs me. I was professional people. Anyway. Now, my next question is, you have to have it all on you.
No. We, um, the auditors hate us for it, but we are used to projects that get reimbursed after the fact. Um, not you, you don't hate us for it, but our, the city auditors hate us for it, but we're used to getting reimbursed after the fact. That's how all these states and federal programs work.
Well, the answer, it hooks up to County Park after I, I am willing to participate in. I think that's probably a good project.
Is Great Western Park gonna do after Dean, you men approached there? Should be a partnership in this or did it one trail and the other? Or anything about it?
No.
When we did the gravel years ago, um, the county then put paved the approach from the gravel onto the county. Do you remember that? What was that? Probably five-ish years ago.
Yeah, it's been all of that, I think.
And at the time, we wanted to do a project like this, but the, um, administration of the hospital wasn't willing to grant easement, grant ownership to the city, and we're not gonna do it if we don't own it because we need to protect our investment. Um, and, and then new hospital leadership sees that they're, that's, you know, kind of useful stand for them, that it's not gonna hurt anything that they have future plans for. So um, that's why this is resurfacing now and, and getting done in the way.
How far does the hospital's ownership come down?
They own, they own all of that, all the way to that tree line. Um, so all that gravel's on their property anyway.
Also, they own all the way down.
Yeah. So they own right about, yeah, right about where, right about where that linear feet of, right about where that, um, marker is, is where the county city line goes. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So this is in city limits, excuse me, and then the rest are parcels out, out of city limits, but it's all their parcel.
So they own.
And then right there.
That's probably the property.
Is the property line right in there.
Yeah. I thought that was probably the way it was.
That is a part of the floodplain too, and trying to.
No, that's actually pretty good in time.
There, yeah, I say, I can't remember.
Yeah, your floodplain is down probably more the access road. It's probably a floodplain or close to it.
That, that, I remember that structure, this down here was, was just out of the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there, they hit the road through here and I can't recall if this piece was.
Well, this could have been too long. This down here gets wet down. That's more of what I would call a wetland.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say this trail section, other than maybe where it meets the actual road, because that we call it the airport road, Birch Avenue there, West Street, that does go underwater sometimes, but not at the hospital. It goes down under, over by the creek more. But that, that's one of the first roads to go underwater in town.
Yeah, I think it's a good project. I think it'd be great to get that paid.
I agree.
And, and at how much? I guess I'm not really sure how.
That's.
We want to.
Like I said, we would be happy with anything. I just, if you knew the starting point, that's why I threw out ten percent. Yeah.
Ten percent of their math or your math.
Just.
Ten percent.
Whatever.
Right.
I would, I'd assume we want to do it over two years.
At what point, at what point did you say you think you would not need the money?
If we can get enough foundation money, so State Rec will be the first one we apply for. If we get that, then that only leaves twenty-five percent left. Um, we always use local money last. Because local money's more likely to be there for the next project, you know? If we can say, hey, we don't need it, and then we go do another segment somewhere, we can be like, hey, remember that money that we earmarked? Let's use it now and, and try to leverage it.
So I, I assume you're gonna want a letter of commitment.
Yeah, yeah. So a letter of support, and then in that letter of support, what the, what financially you're thinking.
So Courtney, we probably want a motion on this, then probably. And I would assume we'd probably take this out of local options.
I would think so. I would think that'd be the logical place.
Um,
I also would think that would be in next year's budget.
Yeah.
This got to finish this year.
You're talking.
Or I, thirty days, forty days anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
But, because we don't have a budget, we have to do a budget amendment. You would need for the.
It'd be fine.
So we're part of twenty-four and twenty-five.
We make our editors, that's sometimes, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I mean, we could go, I suppose, we could go.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Then three and twenty, twenty-three.
Also, it's current, that's current year to take fifteen out of eight.
The next current year.
So we start July for. So the next two.
That's a whole nother year.
But we have to make a budget amendment for the first year.
Yeah.
We already have one.
And we.
We haven't been in that year yet, so.
We're burning down.
Well, then, if that's the case, I will make a motion that we give a letter of support to this project. And I'm gonna say that we, we commit fifteen thousand dollars the next two years upon, upon successful.
Grant.
Grants.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys. I'll do my best to get the other thirty and little.
Wave magic one.
I know. Now, it's go to work time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is St. Anthony Regional Hospital, the tax exempt bond discussion.
Okay.
Good. How are you?
I'm Eric Solmanson. I'm the interim CFO of the hospital. Um.
Glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for letting me come here to present this. So we are doing a remodel, uh, project at the hospital that's gonna start construction in August. Um, dialysis moving from the fourth floor of the hospital, come to the first floor, um, getting all new equipment, nice remodel, touch up. And then our OB unit is getting a complete remodel as well. Um, total cost of the project's about six point three million. Um, for just from a cash flow perspective, um, and interest rates being so low, um, we're looking to do some, um, debt financing, uh, to pay for that project of six million dollars. Um, tax exempt, um, is obviously a better interest rate for us, and in order to get that, we have to go through, um, you guys or the city, um, or someone else within an eight mile radius that has the ability to authorize this. So um, with that, I did have, um, our, our bond attorney send an email to Courtney and then John Wardens as well, just so they're aware. But there is no debt liability on your, your side. Um, there's really no cost. Any cost would be reimbursed by us through that process. And really, what you guys have is a ten million dollar federal limit, um, every single year to do these tax exempt bond issuances. Um, so we're, we'd be asking for six million of that for this calendar year. Um, so other than that, it's, it's just more of a check the box to support the hospital and this remodel project for benefit of this county. And, um, there's, there's really not a lot of issues that you guys are gonna be protecting for this, so.
Well, we've done this once before, and I think that was, I don't remember what year it was.
I think it was two thousand and seven.
Yeah. And you, you vote, and you, you said the same things. I was always aware of who's got ten million to do that. Actually, any community can do that for the rest of you. If, and it does not affect our debt limit at all. They're just borrowing names to get tax exempt status.
So you say any community, and I know this is outside of what we're talking about, any community can do it, but he just said an eight mile radius.
Yeah, of where we are located.
Oh, okay.
You can do that for any project.
Okay.
And I think, but there's, that's not anybody who can get that. I think it's gotta be certain, like, non.
Nonprofits, where does that should jump? Yeah, for profit business cannot.
Yeah, the only thing we have to be careful of is if someone else is looking for a.
That's correct.
For another eight million dollars, I'll say.
That's correct.
You'd have to watch that.
That's why they watch that every year.
Right, yeah, ten million every year.
And we haven't done it since.
Seven.
Yeah. So if someone comes in again this year, we would be able to do another four, that'd be it.
I know in the past, we did a split with the city and with you guys, um, because there was an issue with that ten minutes. You can do that. It's a little messier, obviously.
It's a little cleaner.
Correct. There, there is the ability to do that.
Um, now you say per year, is that on our fiscal year or is that a calendar?
Calendar, correct. So we, we, we want this issued in August and just trying to get ahead of that, that situation, so.
Okay.
So do we, do we have to do all the advertising and then reimburse us?
Um, yeah, so I, I don't know the exact.
I think we kind of went through the whole process.
Correct.
And there might be reimbursees for any expenses.
Correct. Yeah, there's zero dollars out of pocket for you guys. There's no risk associated with it.
Who's your bonding agent?
Um, yeah, it's Christina Kuhn out of Dorsey.
Dorsey.
Yeah. Um, it's me using.
Could've been around Dorsey before we got meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if that's for.
She did the one in oh-seven.
Father Tiff.
Justin.
Josh.
Yes.
And I'm a big part, sorry. And my name, Bob Johnson.
Yeah, this is such a specialized sector, Christina Kuhn.
Let's see what she calls white looks. Our one law.
Bacon.
No, Ben.
Lucas. I, I don't see anything wrong with this. I think this is a good project for the community and I think it's a good project for the county. Um.
Are you guys adding large to the boarding unit?
No, we're just gonna keep the current space.
So those are the only two units you're remodeling on this?
Uh, correct. We have a long-term master facility plan, but, uh, this next fiscal year, that's our plan, is just those two areas. So dialysis is, um, well, it's actually on the fourth floor, which they use a lot of water, and getting water from the first floor all the way to the fourth is, is not very efficient. Um, so moving it down to the first and then all new equipment and everything, so.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, enter into this tax exempt bond program with St. Anthony.
It's just something, I think we probably, you're gonna have some formal documents for us to sign, right?
Uh, not today. I just wanted you guys.
So that's why I'm saying we maybe just, uh, we can make a motion that we commit to at this point.
So what I will do then is contact, uh, Chris Kuhn, our bond attorney, and say that, you know, they're, they're wanting to.
There'll be a whole file.
Move forward this, and I think, yeah.
She's, she gets.
But I just wanted to make sure that we'll have to probably do a formal when, when you get the documentation. So I would say we just do it.
And I'll just change my motion to that we, I tentatively enter in an agreement with St. Anthony that we pursue this.
And I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We'll just stay in communication and, yeah, appreciate it, guys.
Get your documentation, come back, and we'll get that on, on the line.
Awesome.
I'm assuming John will want to take a look at it too.
Yeah, yes, yeah, we'll, we'll be sure.
I think we have to have hearings and.
Yes, there's, there's, yeah. There's a whole last time you'll hear from me, so.
Well, and I, I remember my last time I did it. And I think we did it for something out in Willie one time too, because we couldn't do enough bonding. I think we've done it twice, so.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Earl. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is secondary, secondary roads. Good morning, Zach. I just wanna make a just a quick public statement that we do have the drone video for Drain Seventy-Seven, and that we all will be looking at it. So the public is aware that we are.
We are moving forward as quickly as government can move forward.
You want to put it?
Well, I think there was people.
It was, it was a lot of it, that's why I shut it.
No.
So you have some utility permits?
Yep. Starting off with a couple utility permits. Uh, first one is for Windstream or McLeod USA, I guess depends on how you want to look at it. Um, they've done work in this area here before. This is up along Highway Seventy-One and Hundred and Eightieth Street, which should be by O'Hara and then Banwell up there. Um, except they're just trying to get service to a, to a business. Um, most of the work's actually taking place along the right away of once, of Highway Seventy-One, just a little bit on Hundred and Eightieth to get to connect in. So, um, really don't see any issues with what they're trying to accomplish there. Do you have any questions on that one? This is fiber, I should say.
I don't see any issues with that. I'll make the motion to approve the utility permit for, you said it's McLeod.
McLeod USA.
USA.
Thank you.
Been a motion on a second for more discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Super happy face.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second one is for West Central Highway Water.
They got us hurt. That's where it's going. I thought it was going there.
This one you guys think?
No, that's not missing. That was just my calendar.
Well, so for what's up, sure, rural water, um, must have our rural water. This is on Mahogany Avenue, um, just south of Carroll, basically. Um, south of, uh, Pickfarl and Little Ways, looking to get a new two-inch line underneath the road, uh, board it in on tour, um, I believe, I'm assuming for a, uh, new house is what I'm guessing, but I don't know that it says that, but. Yes.
Um, just to say, say please.
Yep.
I don't know. Oh, that was. Okay. I don't have one.
I know he sent it to us. I read it. I can't find it there either.
Um, this right past me, Simon's acreage.
Yep. Yep.
You won't do. Great. I'll make a motion to prove that you took it.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Close, question carries.
Thank you. Got a couple drains. Both are in, uh, the same drain, Drain Sixty-Six. Um, built together, obviously, but, uh, the first one is Richland Section Twenty-Three. Kind of the bottom end of Drain Sixty-Six. And, uh, what's going on there is the tile must be, it's, it's relatively close to the surface.
What's going on there is the tile must be, it's it's relatively close to the surface. And it's uh. It must be plugged, the water's coming to the surface, running on top of the ground. And then dropping back in to the tile in a hole. And some of it is continuing to run on the top of the ground to the east. We're gonna do some investigation, we'll get out there to see how much is plugged and.
So this is the area you're talking here?
Yes.
Is that an eighteen inch tile?
I believe so.
It's not working very well.
No, it looks like it's working really well on top of the ground.
So we're gonna have to do some dig in and find out how much is plugged and it's probably gonna be replacing it, I don't think we'll be jetting it out and be replacing it.
That doesn't look, the picture doesn't look like it's in a waterway at all, it looks like this, is there no water within? So it's a very shallow.
We're back into, remember we that Nylah Hooten property that we did there, it's a very similar system, I think. It's shallow, yeah.
So when we had, they're north of Kuhn, it was. Deep time or this.
So we're, and then we've already had some further discussions with the landlord, I'm trying to get that to be a a waterway on itself. So we're trying to protect that a little bit, because there's gonna be some cover issues, I think, but we'll know, we'll know more when we dig into it.
And you're gonna try to locate that tile to the best you can with that locator and giving the rough idea about where to place that if he so to.
Right, and if it, if the tile would be out of the bottom area and up on the, I guess on the side where it's a little deeper, that's maybe a little different situation, but. We'll evaluate that as we see what the depth is and what what we have going on, so, but it.
Okay.
This this could be a significant repair, or how many it could be some.
So I was asking about that was eighteen inch.
Right.
So, you know, and it looks like, you know, just by the area, it looks like there's actually a waterway there. You know, but according to that, that it certainly doesn't look that way.
Yeah, it's, it's uh, I think it's been an issue for a while, it's the first time I knew about it, I guess, but I think it's been like this for a little while. Just it's pretend it's been called in, but uh, so. At this point, it's not planted yet, it's gonna be going to the inside, so plant around it, go from there, but it does affect downstream landowners too.
Well, I think that may be interesting. That is gonna be a big issue for some trouble, I mean, you're gonna have to have.
Right, and we may have, and we may have to haul some dirt in, um, like we did last time, we'll see, we'll we'll try to evaluate that as we. Find out how deep it is and start digging up. Gotta start somewhere.
So are you asking to approve here a repair or just investigate?
Well, I guess I'd like to approve repair, that way, once we get going, we can keep going and I'll, I can come back with you and let you know how we're going, I guess it's. It's up to you how you like us to do it, but like, once we get out there, I like.
I get, I get that, but boy, if it's gonna be a costly repair, then. It's just gonna be an assessment issue.
It it could be.
The thing is, if you're gonna get in or not, there's nothing planned, it's gonna be something shortly, rather.
And and.
Not if it's wet.
I don't know.
How do it looks like that?
But I mean, you don't wanna do it when the cross is.
And and I don't know if they've gotten in there since I've been out there, this was um, middle of last week while I'm out there looking at this, so. I don't, I, as of Friday, I don't think it was planted, but uh. And the property owner understanding, they're they're understanding, they know, they want us to try to fix it, so.
Yeah, obviously.
But no, I, if you want to.
Replace that whole stretch, they're about eighteen inch. That's what. How many feet is, you don't have it on, do you?
No, I don't, I I really don't know, the waters are on top of ground, I'd say for maybe two hundred feet. But. I haven't priced it, I don't know.
Well, it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done, if that's what it is.
The the biggest problem.
Let me ask you this. Instead of replacing that tile, is it possible that we jet that, get them cleaned out?
We can look at it and look at the condition, but uh, there's been, there's been, there's been more repairs on this line, I believe. So it leads me to believe that.
Bandage them.
Well, sometimes you start jetting and you start blowing it apart and create more issues.
Especially during the October.
So I.
Then maybe it's not a good idea, but I just think of a way to maybe keep the cost down.
Absolutely, and we can do that, but jet's pretty, gets pricey too.
Yeah, I know it does.
We wouldn't have that ability to ourselves, so.
Eighteen inch.
Yep.
Well, and actually, it, it, it's possible that it's not. Even in that area, it could actually be.
Quite a few feet below it.
Could, could be down a long ways, yeah, I mean, if you don't, if you don't have a. If you don't have, you know, like my broken tile is pretty obvious, you know, but you don't have that.
Yeah, there's the that first picture where that flag is, that's where the hole is, where the water, some of the water is dumping back in, and it's.
So then there is a hole there.
There is a hole there.
Yeah.
Um, and and we'll just have to dig it up in in spots and see and try to locate where it's at. And then try to figure out if it's completely plugged or what, or maybe it's just a one little spot and the rest is open. We don't, we don't, and this is the first spot it can get back in, so it might not be a as big a deal as we're thinking, but it has the potential to be, I guess. But as far as repair, I mean, if you want us to investigate, come back before we do a major, you know, major. Repair of.
Yeah, I thought drain sixty six was.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that pit in the, that's it picture.
Seems like every year we do assessments, we assess drain sixty six.
Of course, that's an old drain. Those old drains are getting showered right along. So you gotta do what you gotta do.
Oh, yeah.
Motion, go ahead and. It's bored and repair has necessary.
Now, second.
But a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Was that motion for both twenty three and twenty one?
Just sixty six so far.
Well, they're they're both sixty six, that's for twenty three, section twenty one, Richland section twenty one, there's another a separate. Uh, lateral has a. An issue as well, um, it's a broken tile, I believe this one's just like I saw, cold, just uh, replacing a section or maybe it's a joint, I I I'm not sure. I wasn't able to get out and look at this one, but um, looks smaller and closer to the end of a, end of a district line. This field is planted, but the property owner is giving us permission to get in and to get it fixed as well, so. The renter called that in, so. Should be a relatively simple one, hopefully.
Would you want me to do them all on?
Either one, doesn't matter, you can do it.
I'm making a motion for authorized for sixty six in section twenty one. Yeah, sorry.
There's been a motion in a second, any more discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, construction update, uh, the N three bridge, northeast Templeton is moving along. They poured the, one of the bridge rails uh last, last Friday. So they're moving along on that, they'll have a little bit more to do, but uh, they're they're making pretty good progress, so.
You just got one.
Real, or, I think just one, I'm pretty sure that's what it was, because they had more more work to do. But uh. Hopefully, within the next, say, two to three weeks, they're wrapping everything up, maybe sooner than that, so. Um, the Falcon Railroad Bridge, um, the railroad has gotten that done, that was done probably a week and a half ago, I believe. Um, they did a, they did a pretty good job, I'm pretty impressed with what they did, it's still a wood structure. But they uh did repair some stuff on the uh substructure side as well, some cross members and different things. And uh, leveled it up, it's it's a significant improvement for for ride anyway. From the weight carrying capacity, I don't know if it's a whole lot different than what it was, because you still have the same substructure that it did before, but. But uh, definitely needed repairs and and uh, they they did do that, so. Um, Lanesboro E nineteen, they moved in to start laying asphalt last Thursday. Um, they got the base lift done Thursday, did half of the surface lift up left on Friday, and they're finishing that other half today. So they should have all the asphalt done today if everything goes as planned, so.
That's in roads.
That's in roads, um. The other thing that we're doing, instead of having them do the shoulder, the shoulder rock, placing the shoulder rock. We're gonna try to do that ourselves with our our shoulder machine, since it's only two miles. Um, try to save a little dollars and we were planning on using our shoulder machine this year anyway to do a couple of different areas, so. Try to do that one as well, so.
So the paving should be all done today.
Paving should be done today. And then, uh, last thing on the list that's added kind of in the construction update was. Did some little bit of research into some numbers for resurfacing. Maple River and Mount Carmel, side side roads or streets. Very rough numbers as far as uh, the square footage is, we just tried to get some some base numbers of what we're talking about. And we looked at um doing another seal coat, which is what was there. Um, versus doing like a two inch overlay, two inch asphalt overlay. Um, there's definitely uh, some patching that needs to be done in Maple River first, no matter what we do. Um, that's not included on these, in these numbers. Mount Carmel is 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 pretty solid, there's not, there may be a, maybe one patch, but overall, it's really holding up very well. The other difference is, is with Mark Carmel being as flat as it is, we'll probably have to remove some pavement. There's some of the existing surfacing there to put asphalt in if we're gonna go that route. So it it probably will even cost more than what this estimate is, because two inches isn't gonna be enough. But I was trying to keep keep it apples to apples for starting off, so. Uh, Maple River with the grade we have, that that won't be as much of a problem, there could be a couple areas, but for the most part, there's enough grade, we can hold it on top, but. In rough numbers, it's about two seventy five a square yard for seal coat. Versus roughly twenty two dollars a square yard for asphalt, so. We're over eight times approaching that ten times the, the amount of that seal coat does, so.
So you're saying there's places we'd have to pour out before we put asphalt on there?
In Mount Carmel, yes, because if you put two inches of asphalt on top of the road in Mount Carmel, you're gonna create drainage problems. Because it's so flat, there's not, the water's not gonna be able to get out. You're gonna trap it in driveways and.
Right now, it goes over.
Right now, it goes over.
Well, what I'm getting at is if you had, if if two inches isn't very much asphalt, if you left that others there, you you probably have a stronger base, right?
Absolutely would, and that'd be the ideal thing, but from a drainage perspective, you're gonna create problems that you don't wanna. Have hamper you for future, so that's why you'd have to probably take out four or five inches. And put something back to the same elevation that it is now, if you're gonna go with asphalt, seal coat. You you're not gonna create those drainage problems.
So, now that you went through the work and came up with some numbers, going forward, how does this work? Do you do a town hall meeting and discuss it with?
Whatever you guys, whatever you guys would like to do, we can, we can do that, um, I know that, I know there's definitely a. Uh, a push or a want to have something more than seal coat. Economically and for what, with the, with the amount of traffic that it serves, the seal coat really does a pretty good job. I know it's not what people like, but for what, what that, what the roads serve and what they do, it it does. Pulled up pretty well. Um, Mark Carmel, Mount Carmel especially has held up very well, Maple River, there's some, definitely some areas there where there's some. Truck traffic in different areas that have really beaten beaten up the the road that's there, but that's what we're gonna have to patching either way. Um, if we're gonna do seal coat in Maple River, that would suggest we do all, do those patching of those bad areas and then seal coat over everything. Is what I would recommend there, so. Uh, it's just, there's a, quite a difference between the, the. Costs.
So at Mount Carmel, we're gonna have to remove probably two, at least two inches of grinding. To inches to break even on the lift, and we're probably better off to go.
If you're gonna, if you, you'd have to do at least, whatever you're gonna put in is what you're gonna have to take out, and if you're gonna do it, I don't think it's. Quite, I wouldn't put with two, I'd probably go five, because.
Right.
Driver's trucks and whatever.
And that's, that's going to.
Sign significantly increase that cost.
Yeah, at least double, probably.
More than likely, and again, these aren't hard numbers, these are just trying to get rough. Asphalt's not going the right direction right now, oil prices are going the wrong way, so.
Uh, I don't think we have any choice, but other than try to seal coat it.
I've been thinking about this, and I know that, you're right, we want the. The higher end in this asphalt, but there's no way we can go in and do all of it. The other way to do it is, let's say, if you were to commit to doing so many blocks a year in this community. I mean, we'd have to have some bond, because in order to make it work. And tie it into when we do our projects.
Yeah, I think it'd be tough, because a lot of times it's hard to get the contractor that's gonna come and do eight miles, they don't wanna, they don't wanna come do a lot, that's a different. Different thing, different animal.
Well, I think if you, if you, the only way you can do this is if you have to commit, do so many blocks every year. And then it's gonna be a question, well, who gives, who, why does so and so get theirs third?
Well, I I've gotten a lot of calls on both Mount Carmel and Maple River, probably more so in Maple River. Texts and, and uh. You know, I, and my, my point was, well, it's time to, you know, I mean. One of the comments I I make is that we're we're looking at it, we're talking about it, but yeah, that's all you're doing. And, and so I guess that's why I asked Zach to go ahead and put some numbers to what it's gonna cost to. Put the overlay on there, and um. You know, I, I think a town meeting would be good, at least for Maple River. And say, this is the cost. You know, this is somewhat prohibitive as as far as. Um, of what the county can actually do, and. You know, and and that's, that's the thing that I'm saying is that, you know, you can say, no, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna seal coat it. Well, that's not gonna make them happy, they're gonna want an explanation, and the explanation is, it's a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars to do your community, and that's. From what we know, I mean, I think there's also some drainage issues in Maple River, you know, that need to be taken care of while you're doing this. And so that's gonna cost more as well.
Yep, and this does include the passion that we're gonna do either way, so I mean, if. The, the overall cost just to fix what we have going on is definitely gonna be more than what what was shown on the sheet. This is just trying to be the comparison between seal coat versus asphalt, so.
No, I mean. Living in Mount Carmel and Maple River is a step up from living in the country on a gravel road. You know, and um, it is a hard surface and. But for us to maintain it as a county is difficult to do.
There's a lot of other smaller communities are still doing seal coating for that same reason, why were you looking at this? And I will say the time you and I went up to Maple River or Mount Carmel, those roads are actually holding up very well, I mean. Uh, and if we start pouring out of them, you're gonna have to replace that all in their kind of weight. Uh, I, that's why I was hoping maybe we'd be able to pour it on top, lay it on top, you'd have that base that would get by with two inches, but. Just going two inches is not gonna.
No, and and that's, that's the, you hit the nail on the head about, I mean, it's. Especially in Mark Carmel, and in some of the areas in Maple River as well, but the seal code's actually held up, and I'm not sure how often we've done that, if it's. Every five years or seven years or what what the number's been and how, when we've done seal coat, but. every five years or seven years or what, what the number's been and how, when we've done seal coat, but you can do, you know, seal coat every five to seven years quite a few times to pay for one, one asphalt and that's a, that's thin asphalt, so.
Well, and then there's the other choice that we can talk about and I kinda did a figure if you went, I don't know how wide those are, I just assumed they were twenty-four feet.
That's
pretty close.
Yeah, some, some of them in Maple River are only sixteen.
So I, I, I took twenty-four feet, so I took, let's say if they have a fifty-foot frontage and they only do the half. And if they pay for that at twenty-two dollars, that's almost fifteen hundred bucks per house. And if they got a hundred, it's almost three thousand bucks to assess it. I don't think there's a lot of them that are gonna wanna do that.
Happen. You know, and the other thing too is that even the incorporated communities, Templeton, Reno, we still do a lot of seal coating. I mean, that's all they can afford. So it's not that, it's not that other communities, you know, councils are coming up with the same option that, it granted. Nobody likes that seal coat. You don't like driving on it after they just put it on because it
Yep, the biggest thing is that people walk across it and then when it's hot, you get an, oh, it's hot.
Yeah.
It bleeds through and.
It's a mess.
I think the whole town hall thing, that would bring light to, so you have a hundred and eighty-three here. Let's just go ahead and say two hundred and fifty thousand by the time you open it all up, do all the fixing, like you had said, patchwork, drainage work. Or twenty-two thousand. And then you just gotta do the numbers. I mean, you're right, there are a lot of houses that aren't in one, two, three thousand dollars.
If you're talking, have to do drainage up there at Mount Carmel and cut that out, you're not gonna get by for that two inches.
No, you're not.
That's, that's not even realistic.
And there, and there's parts of town that maybe would work. I mean, there, there's some, but there's a lot of it that is flat. I'm thinking of the like the southwest part, I think it's very flat. I mean, and I think you're gonna trap water if we try to start doing that, so.
Yeah, that's a problem right there anyway. I mean, he's got water going into his garage.
The, the other thing I would note too is, I did not include the main, the main roads, the county road east west or Mark Carmel or M twenty going through Maple River either. Those, those will get resurfaced that, uh when we do those roads going through now. Well, the traffic count, I mean, you're talking, instead of ten to fifteen vehicles a day, you're talking three hundred to seven hundred to eight hundred vehicles a day, so. Um it's in, in different, in lots more trucks, larger equip, larger um heavy equipment going through there, so.
But yeah, I think, I think we can address this issue and stop the calls. Yeah, it's, it's, it, there's not a good answer.
Yep, and I've gotten calls as well from, from both and uh it, it's something that needs to be looked at. Um Maple River, I would say is in worse shape. There's some areas that are falling apart over there. But uh it, it's something we've definitely been to look at and.
So why don't you, should we set up a town hall and have that discussion so that they know we are working on it? Cause, or looking at it, cause if you don't.
So do you wanna have two of them or you have one? I would, I would suggest we have one of each, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and.
When we have that one for the sewer in Maple River, we did it at night and had a lot of people.
Yeah, we had pretty good attendance.
And we had a lot of other comments, you know, they brought up a lot of other things that they're concerned about and we addressed them.
Which is good.
Well, the other choice is gravel.
Always a choice.
They don't want that.
Always a choice.
I mean.
Courtney and I will come up with some dates and then I'll send them out.
There are other choices, they become incorporated. We don't worry about it.
I'm guessing that's true.
So that, the other side of that coin, Dean, what you just touched on is, um if I'm in one of those incorporated communities and I can see that the county's gonna come in and asphalt all my roads, that's the biggest expense that each city faces. It's pretty easy to become unincorporated. And, and I just, that can of worms can get real ugly real quick.
We could, I, I've thought of that many times.
Think they would do that, but I mean, that is out there.
No, there's communities that are probably pretty close to that.
Yeah, I mean, they're hanging on the edge now. I mean, their taxation is.
Uh one of, I think of that.
Yeah.
Could happen really easy. Yeah, you're right.
So.
You, you're seeing that, that.
I, I know. And I've, I've seen another part of the state already.
That's all I had for today.
Thanks for all the good news.
Yeah.
I requested, being after June seventh.
I was thinking maybe the sixth, the sixth, we should have.
And you can be the secretary that day.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, next one's this. The next item on the agenda is to approve tables and I would like to add working that
meetings.
Batings. Um I actually want to hold off on shy powder.
Did you give that back to me?
Thought I did. I'd like to hold off on shy powder, one more billable because I wanna make sure we have a copy of blueprints.
Yeah, our jobs are as built.
And Ken didn't get back to me, that's kinda why I wanna hold off. That's that ten thousand.
We're gonna do the
Just Tony had one.
Bill for draw twenty-nine, draw thirty. And then the third of the fire, and that's it, right?
Yep.
Um as far as that change order then, will they bill that separate at some point? That's that one that includes or coding showers.
Those are separate items that I think that he's taking care of, that carpet.
And.
They shouldn't be, have to be part of the change order. Is that there is what, what, what you just read off that takes all the retainage and everything from baiting takes pays that.
Okay, so I won't worry about that.
So the only thing, those should be separate after bills.
So issues, payment for drop twenty-nine, drop thirty, and then the third of the fires.
One, one, one draw is for the work completed last and then the next draw is for the retainage, the last retainage. And then the, the last thing is that, what we agreed upon that shop that.
And then the shy one will go off hard, it's how we find out about those plans.
Dean, you know, um the only question I had on bills, they had a a lot of electrical work done on church transportation.
It's in the camp downs.
They had, well, you said building, okay, that's campground.
Ground issues, I know. Not that, that's on the west side more than anything else.
Yep, that's the old part, yeah.
Courtney, on page three, I should have reached out to Jamie out online and it's not a big bill, but I didn't understand the description for, under the ambulance, two-two-zero-five nine-nine-nine-three for a hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I believe that's mileage reimbursement.
Okay.
What those numbers mean, but could check on that. Um I'm guessing that, I don't know, I'm, I think that's probably a typo.
Just has a bunch of numbers.
But I I believe that's mileage reimbursement, cause I think he had to go pick up some people after they left the ambulance.
Yes, and update on that, they're like, they're eight weeks old.
Check on, I'm gonna double check on that.
Repairers.
Nice.
Would you say?
I see, I didn't notice the numbers.
That was the only one I.
Yeah. Don't know why I didn't see that. So, Richard. Uh be page four. Yeah, fine nineteen. Money coming out of local options.
Chance. Okay. What, what's the first part of that? Thank you.
You mean that sign?
Yeah.
I assume that's through very much color, that's like the Lanesboro.
Oh, is that what it is? Uh but that's, how much was it? Six hundred and some dollars.
Six twenty.
What happened to that, the gate?
I would assume that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think you guys, your guys were there doing some work and they damaged some of the parts.
Oh, at the tower?
They like.
Gotcha.
We'll just be taking that out of.
Well, instead of, I'm like, was it roads that would pay for that? But they put the rock on and we paid for the rock, but not the labor. So I figured it was, we could probably pay to fix the cars. Because we still got a good deal on that.
There's other things going on up there and I just wondered if it where it was at, if it was, had to do with the water situation or, or what, so.
And I guess.
That makes sense now.
A big deal, like a large area, just a.
Well, it's not a big, big amount or anything, but just more curious and anything. I make a motion to approve the tables.
That's like.
There's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? Did you find out what that one was?
It is mileage and we'll get it. That was just a typo.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the CBDG Housing Down Payment Assistance Program, sign number twenty-one H S G B zero-zero-one claim document.
Okay, so this is the second program that we have. So this would be the first draw and the second program. Um and just to note, she said they have three more closing scheduled for the next thirty days. So the program is obviously doing well again. Purchases have been made in Alber, Coon, Carroll and Manning with three of the four clients relocating from other towns for jobs. So, that's wonderful.
Yes, it's a good thing.
All right, here's the bad news.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we just tie into this now. Well, let's first, let's approve this. I'll make a motion, approve the plan for thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
And I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Give him the bad news. All right, the, Debbie Durham has kinda issued a warning that she may be closing this program. And they're gonna shift that money into a different housing version. Uh because the, every, every community in the state of Iowa is struggling with housing for people. And so they're considering, they need more funds, so they're considering closing this program and bringing it into that fund. Now, we, we can write a letter to the uh uh Chris Whittaker, send it out maybe, and I can get you a copy of it if you'd like to send an email off to him. I, I think the more support we get, the better off we are. But this program, once we shifted it to the county level, it, it, because there were so many parameters for the communities to do it, that they had to wait and wait and wait and wait to let it build up before they could do a project. Well, now when we shifted the county, it makes it easier for everybody to get in quicker. Uh.
Which is a good thing.
Which is a very good thing because it, first of all, it keeps the homes in good repair, which keeps your tax base up, which increases and gives you opportunities to put people in if you do have somebody wanna enter the workforce. So there's a lot of good there. Uh I understand what they're saying, uh but I think we should write the letters, make the attempt and uh if it goes, it goes. Uh it, it hasn't been decided yet, but we just got wind of it that it's very well could happen, so.
Then we have to have these letters in by May thirty.
By May thirty-first. It's just emails, letters, whatever you wanna send. There is a, uh Chris has a rough draft letter.
A template?
Template, yes.
Boilerplate, yeah, yeah. That we can send out.
Yeah, I'll get that off to you and then uh
so it's, so where's the money going to places like uh
Well, it's water, Waterloo and Cedar Rapids. Yeah, yeah, and then larger metropolitan areas will have a bigger program.
Yeah.
And you're right, this, this program helps small, small communities.
Yeah.
You know, if you got a house that's got some, that's sitting there and ain't getting nothing done with it, at least it's repairable, they can get it done and bring it up to grade and increase the valuation and get it back.
You know, a lot of those.
It's, it's done a great thing for.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Too good to be true, right?
A lot of those homes, next, you know what the next step is for those homes, they'll just go on further down, now they become derelicts and.
Yeah, they could become rental properties.
Yeah, or less.
Yeah.
So.
All right, now that you did the bad news, let's move on. Item number six, the newer management. We have one for Home Place, Alan and Lisa Asher, section seven, results township. Craft rotation or optimum yield and then do a four-year update. And we're gonna jump into committee reports and I'll go first.
You just wanna go to eight? Since you're here.
We're gonna scratch what I just said, we're gonna, item number eight. And have you ladies give the board the local health interim staffing service plan update.
I have a PowerPoint that um yeah, looks like Ben is going to bring up.
Hey Julie.
I guess he'll have to run it, I'll just say next, right? My guess, because I can't hit anything for this, yeah.
Just tell him what you want because
Yeah.
we're telling several things.
Okay, um all right, you can go to the next slide. So uh thanks for having us here today. Um just wanted to go over uh an update to, to let everybody know that the Board of Health had our regular meeting last week and and for the last, what, six weeks, so we've had a subcommittee meeting discussing the the staffing needs, uh the service needs for the new structure of the infrastructure of the combined public health. Um so I just wanted to give that, that update today, but before talking about that, what we found in that process, in this process too, is that we need to continuously um do a better job of, of explaining what public health is and what the role is so that it, it makes more sense in the end. So just a reminder, um local board of health is charged with promoting and protecting the health of the residents through three core functions and this is defined by the state of Iowa and the administrative code, assessment, policy development, assurance. Um next slide. Ben? Oh, there you go. Um and uh what is public health? That, we've been getting that question a lot, like I think everybody thought they knew what public health was, but uh with this new structure, we're really trying to hammer in and, and better educate what public health actually is. So according to the CDC, public health is the science of protecting and improving the health of people in their communities. This work is achieved by promoting healthy lifestyles, researching disease and injury prevention, and detecting, preventing and responding to infectious diseases. Overall, public health is concerned about protecting the health of entire populations. Uh next slide. So what you'll notice uh with that definition um is that this graphic right here really uh is, is a nice visual to really show what public health does. The reach is research, health promotion, surveillance, monitoring, analysis, outbreaks, disease prevention, communication, emergency preparedness, recovery, environmental health. There's nothing in that graphic that's provision of direct healthcare services. That's just not equated overall with public health. Next slide. Yeah, yep.
I mean, that's good to have.
Yeah, that graphic is a good graphic. And this, uh this definition too, I, I wanted to um put in there, this is through CDC, which is Centers for Disease Control. So CDC, federal government, they're the ones that are putting together the guidance for, for the public health infrastructure in the county or in the country that goes down to the states. The states then go off of this guidance and they're, they're dictating that back to the counties. So it's a flow all across the country. And according to CDC, why is public health important? Because public health professionals try to prevent problems from happening or recurring through implementing educational programs, recommending policies, administering services and conducting research. And this right here, I really wanted to highlight, it's in contrast to clinical professionals like doctors and nurses who focus primarily on treating individuals after they become sick or injured. So again, public health, it's, it's not that provision. We hear the word health, but we've gotta put that aside of what we think is traditional healthcare services. Um public health is also working to limit health disparities. That's something, that's a whole nother topic that, that uh COVID really brought to light, how um you can kind of isolate based on geographic age, race, socioeconomic status. You can kind of predict what health outcomes with COVID were going to be. Um but so a large part of public health is promoting healthcare equity, quality and accessibility. Next slide. So with that in mind, this is another really good graphic. This is um from CDC. This this is a graphic that puts together what your public health foundational capabilities should be. So in that infrastructure, you should have a, a plan for assessment, surveillance, emergency preparedness and response. And again, pointing out, emergency preparedness and response is a huge component of public health. And again, pointing out, emergency preparedness and response is a huge component of public health today. Um, policy development and support, communications, community partnership development, that partnership development is huge for public health. Um, organizational administrative competencies, that's assuring that you have people that, uh, have the right skill set to be in that position. And then accountability, performance management, again, that's because that accountability, these are public dollars going into the public health infrastructure. And that's why you have to be sure that you have that management of transparency and accountability. So if you look underneath like the five main branches of how you could put all of your programming into or, or what your capabilities and your competencies should go into, you could break that down to communicable, communicable disease control. Now communicable, that's transmissible, you know, like chickenpox, COVID. Um, chronic disease and injury prevention, environmental public health, maternal, child, and family health. And that again, that is a huge part of a public health infrastructure. And in Carroll County, that's underneath new opportunities. So that's why we're not really apples to apples with a lot of counties, um, that maybe have their own maternal, child, and family health because that's a large staffing and budgeting, um, component. But for us, uh, that's been under new opportunities for, I think, thirty-seven years, something like that. Um, and they do a fantastic job with that. Um, and then also access to and linkage with clinical care. Again, I need to emphasize access to and linkage, not provision of clinical care. Next slide. Um, another reminder, I've, I've gone over this, uh, pretty looking wheel in other meetings, but really just can't emphasize it enough. These ten essential public health services, broken down by the three core functions that I mentioned with assessment, policy development, and assurance. Those ten essential public health services, that is what makes a strong public health infrastructure. So these capabilities of assess and monitor population health, communicate effectively to inform and educate, um, improve and innovate through evaluation, research, and quality improvement. So I don't need to read through them all again, but again, the, these ten essential public health services, this is the core of why we were making this change and what we're moving to, to reach those, those three core functions and enable equitable access within the county. Next slide. So again, just to kind of rehash, why, why did we get to this point? What factors did we look at that, that influenced, uh, this redesign of, of public health services? Well, obviously the key findings and the recommendations from the assessment. Um, I'm not going to go over all of them. I just pulled out a couple of them um, because all of you had the report, you read through the report. We had a great presentation at Swan Lake, uh, the beginning of, of February. And that really, um, emphasis, you know, explained that very well. But again, we needed to remember that, that the findings from that report showed that we had minimal public health education and outreach effort. That was the perception um, that there was a lack of clarity on how Carroll County Public Health was understood. Uh, there was a view that was repeated over and over that public health was centralized to the city of Carroll. Um, and one of the key, uh, recommendations moving forward, uh, was that they felt there was a large opportunity for collaborations with other counties, regional groups, healthcare providers, and nonprofit organizations. So taking that into consideration and then also, um, the state of Iowa funding through the local public health services grant, uh, in the past, that, that fifty-five thousand that we get each year, uh, that was broken down as like a sixty percent split that went to home care aides and forty percent split that went to public health. Um, and some of those activities like foot assessments, blood pressure clinics were billed to that time. Well, now IDPH is trying to strengthen again as a, as a result of COVID and, and their, um, integration with DHS to have more efficiencies. They want to make sure that all dollars moving forward are focused exclusively on population health. So the foot clinics, blood pressure clinics, that's an individual, that's not population health. So that funding will a hundred percent going to pop, uh, go into population health activities. So we need to account for that. Also, another factor, um, we really didn't take into consideration, uh, that's been happening over the years, is that we have increased access for residents in the county for preventive services through what you would think as a non-traditional provider. Um, pharmacies that have popped up in, in the grocery store, Walmart, uh, Walgreens, uh, they can provide flu shots. They, they can provide COVID shots. They, they, uh, have proven to be a really strong healthcare partner and really increase access all throughout the county. Um, so we need to take that into consideration. We have more access to some of these services. And ACA, and that's Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, uh, we never really adapted to those changes, and those were profound changes for the public health system, but we just kind of kept moving along, um, and didn't take into consideration that now we have more insured residents because of ACA. Our uninsured rate in Carroll County is just four point five percent. And that's for adults. Children, I, uh, as Dr. Heim says over and over, that there shouldn't be any reason a child in the state of Iowa doesn't have health insurance. Because the state of Iowa has increased that safety net over the years and made that eligibility, um, easier for everyone to have access, for all children to have access to health insurance. Um, and also with ACA, preventive exams are now covered by health insurance. So those, uh, you know, mammograms, um, um, cervical exams, you know, things of that nature that in the past, if you were underinsured or didn't have insurance, women didn't get those unless that was facilitated through public health to try to find funding like through Susan Gi Coman or, or different funds like that. But now that's, that's all covered with insurance. So there's less reliance on those public health connections. Next slide. So keeping that in mind, um, this is what, uh, what we have proposed and what's been approved by the, the Board of Health is to, for the time being, have interim co-public health directors with staff that we have in place with Megan Owen and Carrie Cursey. And I put the LPN behind their name because a lot of people don't realize that Megan and Carrie both actually do have a nursing background. But when, uh, when you look at the structure of a public health department, what IDPH's preferences for the director of a public health department is to have a, a degree in, uh, public health and experience in public health. And if you don't have that, then they look at a degree in health education. And if you don't have that, then they trickle down and say nursing experience, so an RN, because they see that as a nice transition into public health. So what we have right here are two individuals, longtime employees with the county that have both the nursing experience and public health background. And Carrie actually has, um, a bachelor's degree in health sciences and a master's degree in health education. Community health education, correct? So she exceeds the requirements right here. Um, so what we would be looking at is having, kind of splitting up, um, what has been done right now, um, putting that, dividing that between Megan and Carrie, but then pulling, uh, some of their duties and then putting that into by hiring a new administrative support person. And looking at, um, numbers, you know, data from services of the last few years and then the infrastructure that the community, uh, education, we'd like to do the partnership building, we think that would be a thirty hour. That's what we're going to, we'd like to advertise that is thirty hours. I don't see a need right now, right now, that that would need to be forty hours. Um, but we will definitely, uh, under Carrie and Megan's leadership, now evaluate that six months, uh, down the road to see if thirty is still going to work there. But that's why we're calling that as an interim right now, um, because it will take a little bit to, uh, assess the infrastructure to, you know, see what services, what potential new education services we want. Uh, next slide. So with that, uh, what we have proposed and what the board has approved is adding a fifteen thousand dollar stipend on the Megan's su- salary and a ten thousand dollar stipend on to Carrie. And then with the new administrative position, uh, we went with a little bit of the higher range of what is, um, provided in, in county health departments uh, for the between twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour for thirty hours a week. Uh, because this person is going to be responsible for, uh, kind of directing flow with, with the phone calls, uh, helping with the community outreach as well. So that salary investment, we think on the conservative end would be about seventy-five thousand. And that's if we go the high end of twenty-five dollars an hour for thirty hours a week. And then figuring in French, now we don't know if they'd, um, have a need for the, uh, health insurance or, because I know that breakdown because it's not full-time, it's a higher percentage of what the employee would pay. So, so thinking those factors, that's what we think right now would be the, the conservative estimate. Next slide. So as you can see, there are a lot of different funding pools that will help cover that salary. Um, as I mentioned, the local public health services grant, fifty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-one is what we have allocated to Carroll County. In the past, we had that sixty, forty breakdown. Um, sixty percent of that for this year is already going into Megan's salary. Um, and now we'll be able to put that additional twenty-two thousand that went to St. Anthony. That'll be able to go to staff that are working on public, uh, or population-based programming. Uh, we have Preparedness Coalition Funds. Uh, this is roughly about thirty-five thousand, uh. The last two years, quite a bit of this money has been returned back. It hasn't been utilized. Um, in, in immunization grant, uh, we get this every year. Uh, for the next year, it'll be ten thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars. This will go towards staff time for conducting the school and childcare immunization audits. Um, so again, directly can go into salary time. And then the county tax dollars that have already been approved for seventy-five thousand. Um, and then there's a small grant called Care for Yourself, uh, nineteen hundred and five dollars. That is for time to, if there are, and, and there are, as I mentioned, four point five percent are still uninsured in the county. So if we find out there are some women that don't have health insurance, can't get, you know, kind of fall in between where they're, they're working maybe multiple part-time jobs and it's not affordable. Um, those are the type of people that we would want to get navigated to utilize funding for mammograms and the preventive exams. So that covers some staff time there. And then also we have this six-year public health emergency preparedness grant money. There's over a hundred thousand like earmarked for this. I think there's about two hundred thousand. It's just through amendment, amendment, amendment. It's, it's there if another emergency comes that we can access. But for this year, what IDPH has done is they've taken some of that emergency money and they've realized that county health departments across the state had a poor IT infrastructure because of lack of funding over the year. So we're already pre-approved. We can spend up to, I think, a hundred thousand for new computers and iPads and equipment for the, for the public. Yeah, so all of those funds will be covered. So as you can see, just kind of adding that up, I, 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 the board feels very confident that we'll be able to return some dollars at the end of the year. Next slide. So just kind of breaking down what Megan's new duties are, um, this is really going to be, uh, the outreach portion. Um, going to community coalition meetings, um, uh, working with, introducing herself to partners, trying to see where there's possibilities of increased efficiencies across the county. Uh, really getting a feel for what services are provided and where are there still gaps in the community? And that's where her time will really be focused. Um, she'll also have kind of some of those traditional nursing type, uh, duties. Um, she is able, she's experienced with TV testing. She used to do that at a previous position at New Opportunities. Um, medication management, that's a, that's a mandate through IDPH that if there is a positive TV test in Carroll County, then Carroll County Public Health has to follow through with that. Um, with, with making sure that individual is, is taking the medications appropriate to treat that. Um, so she'll also, it, just kind of in a nutshell, um, she's going to be serving as the information hub, you know, with connecting. We really see her role as connecting people with resources. Um, trying to make sure there isn't a duplication of services and that we're being efficient with the funding streams that are already available in the county and utilizing those first. Um, she'll also do communicable disease investigation and school immunization and childcare immunization audits. And IDPH provides all the training for, for those essential services. Next slide. Carrie is really going to, um, focus on, for, for some of her new duties will be the Preparedness Coalition. Again, as I mentioned, by seeing that pool, that thirty-five thousand is just for the coalition. That's a big pot of money. This is a big area that IDPH wants people to focus on. And, and we, we feel as if the county can be spending a little bit more time on this. Um, so, so Carrie's duties really will be focused around, uh, preparedness. Um, with her role with environmental health and her specialty and, and obviously being the information source for both Carroll and Crawford County, there's not a lot extra that we can really pull from her. Um, so this, the, the, the preparedness will be a big focus, um, in maintaining, updating the public health emergency response plan. And then if she's able to, if there is a need to kind of stretch out, if, if there's a big disease investigation, um, you know, and, and we had that in the past. There was once a, a veterans dinner, um, in a community, I think about six years ago, that a lot of people got sick and that was about an eighty-person investigation. Um, so if there's something of that nature, then Carrie's going to be that backup to ensure that that gets done. So as I mentioned, both Megan and Carrie will be pulling, um, from their duties that they've already identified, uh, what will be shifted over to the, to the new person, new person. Next slide. So with that, if you take a look at what, and, and the only contract that we found that we had in place between, uh, Board of Health and St. Anthony was for local public health services. So of the functions that were included, I just use the wording that we had in that contract. Um, provide collaborative relationships. Well, we've got that covered with the new plan, the community health needs assessment, health improvement planning. That's covered, that's going to fall under Megan. Uh, disease outbreak investigation, reportable disease and surveillance. Again, we have that covered. Megan's number one carries the backup. Foot care clinic, this is something that would have been phased out without this structure change because IDPH is no longer covering that. Um, so Dr. Heim has already made some connections. Uh, we know that, uh, like the podiatrist in town, we're going to work with them, see if they'd be interested if, if this, uh, if, if some of the nursing homes are interested in having this, basically what it is, that they'll clip toenails and, and, uh, if you have, if you have more of an expertise, then you can look for a diabetic ulcer or things with those foot assessments. Um, the health education that we're, there haven't been any billable hours in that category, but we have a plan in place to, to try to increase that in the future. Again, this nursing health maintenance that was put into the contract, but there hasn't been anything, uh, billable with that for several years. And then screening and assessment, that is, as I mentioned, that will be covered. Next slide. Uh, the changes that will be most visual will be with immunizations and flu clinics. And this is again, with our goal to reduce the duplication of services. So child immunizations. Um, right now, this again, not, we have to take into account that most children have health insurance. And when you provide immunizations, um, or a service through public health, you want to make sure you are the payer of last resort. Like if there are other services in the community, you need to connect them with those services so that there isn't, uh, a double dip type, uh, of, of situation. So with the child immunizations, um, just to give some numbers, you know, these, these numbers have gone down dramatically over the years and you want them to because that's the goal. The goal for public health is to get kids and families to a medical home. So public health wants to just be that gap filling service. If they have insurance, you want to get them to a medical provider. And we are blessed in Carroll County that we are not a health professional shortage area. So we have many family practice provider options in many locations throughout the county. Um, our second largest population base, Manning has two. They've, they've got the hospital has an attached family practice clinic and St. Anthony has an outreach clinic in Manning as well. So, so, and there's other outreach clinics outside of Carroll. So that's the goal number one, is to get those, uh, navigate those people to a medical home and new opportunities shares that goal as well. But for the child health immunizations, just to show, um, in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, there were two hundred and forty-one, nineteen, there was a hundred and forty-six. In twenty, there was a hundred and thirty. In twenty-one, there were fifty-nine. And so far this year, there have been forty-five. And the majority of all those years have been in the month of August. Because August is where you find that it's gap filling because you'll have well-meaning parents that are, you know, insured. And, uh, maybe mom and dad are both working full-time and you have a four-year-old that needs to start preschool or kindergarten. Oh, I forgot to make my appointment. Call into the medical provider. They're booked solid because you've got twenty thousand other people needing their school physicals. So we don't want that person to not go to school because they don't have an immunization. Public health will step in, get that immunization, get that gap filling service. And this has been a partnership in the month of August with New Opportunities for many years anyways. Um, that they have a back-to-school event and you're reaching a targeted population. And then they can get to all of the, um, services that New Opportunities has as well. So it's really coordinated and it's, it's a good, a good event. And so that August, those were the majority of our immunizations. As I mentioned, for this year, there have been forty-five. Twenty-nine of those were in August. There's only been seven kids immunized since, since November. Um, these aren't big numbers that we're talking about. In twenty-one, there were fifty-nine total kids immunized, twenty-six were in the month of August. So again, that month of August, we, we do see as, as still being, uh, um, a big gap filling opportunity. Um, but to to put a schedule out to say that we'll have an an event in December. If somebody is marking that down now, then we're not doing our job. We need to have our staff telling those people, hey, if you've got time now between here and and December, if you want to come in for the immunization, then we need to get you to a medical provider. Um, because that's that that is covered under insurance. So we want to make sure that those dollars in local public health services grant meet that standard, that IDPH mandates, that it's the payer of last resort. So so that's where immunizations will look a little bit different. Um, we still have a little bit of planning, um, that we we need to have occur with New Opportunities. Um, to just to see exactly how that's going to look. Um, flu clinics, uh, this is another one that has been kind of a big debate with public health departments across the state, whether it's really truly seen as gap-filling. Um, so what we would like to do, uh, you know, for years and years, uh, the the public health, the flu clinics at employer locations have been added. And the Board of Health has been very supportive of that. We we sat in meetings and said, this is great because this is a great preventative strategy and we love it. And it is a great preventative strategy. But with this assessment, it's really caused us to drill down and look at specifically how dollars are being spent. Knowing that we now have Walgreens, Apothecary can get flu shots, uh, Walmart, Hy-Vee, in addition to all of our medical providers. So you've increased your access and made it more convenient by having these locations that if you need to get groceries, then you can get your flu shot at the same time. We need to take that in mind and really look, is this gap-filling to go, we're making it more convenient? But is it the role of public health to make a flu shot more convenient? And if now I want you to take public health out of there, is it the role of government to make a flu shot more convenient? Because public health is government. So we want to make sure that first and foremost, we'd like to work with community partners that provide flu shots that have the billing capability because we don't, at this point, see that that's a good use, a good use of public health staff time. Um, and at this point, we're not going to go after, um, the certification for insurance reimbursements because other providers already have that. Now, there are some counties and, um, I I think Sat County in particular does not have as much of the services and the accessibility. So their public health department is still taking on, um, and increasing, you know, their flu, their flu shot outreach because that's gap-filling. But looking at Carroll County, we just don't feel like right now that's gap-filling for public health. So that's our our first response there is to work with, and there's a lot of community partners that um, have expressed an interest in in, you know, it'd be great PR for them. Uh, they get reimbursed for their time and it works together with public health to to fill that need and to increase our preventive strategies countywide. And overall, um, you know, staff will continue to really, um, uh, promote the impact of or promote the importance and the benefit of getting the flu vaccine. That won't change. Next slide. So with that, with the strategies of this redesign and what we have put together, um, with the new staffing service structure, um, we really tried to keep these things in mind, have a re- emphasis on those ten essential services, which is that that colorful wheel that I showed you. More emphasis on community outreach and collaboration, serving as the information hub, that connection to vital services. Making sure our focus is always on population health because that is the goal of IDPH. Um, again, more emphasis on preparedness. Uh, you can see that even just checking out IDPH homepage, preparedness is front and center. And with that large of a funding stream, we we need to make sure that we are, um, meeting, uh, the requirements or the the, um, goals that they have set for county preparedness. Um, as I mentioned from the beginning, the goal was increased efficiencies across departments. We we think that will happen here. Um, reducing public health staff turnover. In the last fifteen years, um, we've had one environmental health director. And actually, you've been here, what, twenty years, Carrie? So the three components that Board of Health has been in charge of governments, environmental health, home care aides, and then local public health. Carrie, in the last fifteen years, we've had one environmental health director. We've had two home care aide directors and that was because, um, we had an unexpected death. You remember Marge Tesrow passed away and Megan's been in that position for nine years. We've had nine different public health coordinators in that fifteen years. And the Board of Health had no role in in any of the hiring. So that's, you know, really been a constant education, retrain. Um, so right here, we feel like we can have that consistency, um, and and see those programming, uh, continue without, uh, the disruption. And then also a big, big part was the more visibility outside of Carol. That's what came across loud and clear in the assessment, uh, was a feeling that everything was centralized um, to the to the community. And so we want to show that there'll be more of those connections outside. Next slide. So why is this defined public health infrastructure important? You can go to the next slide. This is another good visual that shows, again, this is through CDC and other, a lot of other agencies have copied this. To have a strong healthcare system across the country, they really see a strong public health agency as the middle. And poking those connections to drug treatment, law enforcement, uh, faith institutions because, you know, faith institutions can have an impact on, um, identifying individuals that need assistance as well. Nonprofit, doctors, hospitals, community health centers. So, um, you know, it's just, it's just a good visual for for why we're working hard right now to to really build that infrastructure. And I think that's it. I think the next slide is the last one. Yep. Okay.
Uh,
Yeah, yeah.
Too big up to download, probably.
It's three megabytes. I emailed it to, uh, Dalton and should I just ask him to forward? I can't.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, just have him forward to us and then.
I'll get that, I can go for you, Rich.
But I bring off that piece that I, it's just kind of nice to have that.
I'm not going to say no.
Here where I don't have.
I got way more than I need.
I I guess I kind of have a a question for you. In Carrie's role, how much more time will you be pulling from her? Do you know? Yeah, man, that's rough idea.
Yeah, we we talked about where we don't have a exact number of time. We're hoping, I mean, at this point, maybe an additional five or so hours a week. If we need more, we'll figure that out. I'm going to have to give some additional workload to Sherry. So it really just depends on, you know, this is, this is a busy time for environmental health. So some weeks are going to be more, some weeks are going to be less, depending on what I have going on in environmental health, what I have going on in planning zoning. Sherry can do most of the passport stuff.
That that's my question is, another one of my questions is, are we going to possibly look and pull environmental health out of our realm and shove it right into public health, let them do the budget, the whole nine yards? And you know, I'm headed with this. And get our fingers completely out of environmental health. Is that the goal here?
Well, no, I don't think so.
Really are in environmental health. I always.
We do your budget, we approve your budget. There's everything, so what I'm saying is, is that going to move over to uh, to you guys or are we?
So she gets her budget approved twice.
Yeah.
Obviously, obviously you guys have the final say as far as total dollars. But it's salary and everything else is always.
Well, then that, like I said, I'm I'm sitting here, maybe we should pull passports clear away. Maybe we should look at doing other things, uh, with finding its own, so. I mean, I'm I'm just trying to get ahead of the game here because I don't know how many hours that we're going talking about. Uh, I don't know if that's.
What we, yeah, and what we had talked about is that don't foresee with the preparedness being any more than ten hours.
Okay.
What we want is for it to be increased what it is right now. So and that's Carrie already has a role with preparedness as a fiscal agent. So this just formalizes it more and then lets her take that leadership position to ensure she's already going to these meetings, but this is letting her take that leadership position to run with it because we we need to have a little step up the leadership in that area.
So have you given any consideration to maybe moving environmental health out of here and putting it over the fricky building and displacing maybe veterans and fairs and bring them over here? I mean, flip flops and things around so we have some room. We got to kick that tires on any of that.
I guess, you know, we haven't really kicked it, I mean, just touched it, but I think, I think, um, I don't know how much space requirements it's going to require. You know, I mean.
Well, we, yes, yeah, we had talked with, Scott was coming to some of our meetings too. And really, I think the goal, if there's a space in the redesign here, it it'd be ideal to have it all together.
I can see Megan and Carrie interaction if they're in the same.
Yeah.
That that would make things a little easier.
We definitely want them to be together. It it because it's all three of those are public health. The home care aides, environmental health, but that's all public health. We need to get it back to the infrastructure that it used to be.
Yeah, you can email back and forth and you can text back and forth, but sometimes the personal interaction is better.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there there may be a setup, a situation here, and I'm just kind of thinking out of the box here, but, you know, there may be a situation where Carrie stays here. Megan has a desk here, but she also reports to home care aides back in the fricky building because they, that's where the home care aides report to. Maybe something like that, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's some possibilities. Yeah, there's, it has to be worked out, yeah.
But I I.
But with the design of what we're looking at, there's not going to be any room for anything right now in the courthouse. Not right now. Because we're going to have, and this is, we're talking long road down, doing things over the years. We're going to have to find space to move people out of, back into some other place temporarily and then move them back. So, yeah, there's.
The seesaw battle begins.
It's going to be, but several years.
Yeah, and and when the boiler's gone, that creates that space, you know? So that could happen several years down the road.
Yeah, I actually could see them being more over there and then veterans be over there.
Yes, well, yeah, as long as we get.
As long as we're doing passports and zoning, we cannot leave this.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's why we said we might have.
We may just pull that away totally.
But I don't want you to pull away passports.
Well.
The problem is there's nobody else that can.
Well.
We're we're certified to do that program. And somebody else would have to do all the additional training. Sherry likes that program. So for the most part, Sherry's doing the majority of those passports. I'm getting in on it.
But I, but I don't want someone walking in or wanting a passport and you're over there visiting with Megan.
We already have set hours.
And Sh- and and Sherry's gone.
We have set hours.
But if something pops up and you have to go over there during those set hours and that person walks down there and they can't get their passport, that's going to make me really unhappy.
Then we have to put up a notice like any other office would in the case of an emergency and say, I'm sorry, something has happened, we cannot be open today. We are only open one day a week for passports. That's our official one day.
Come, we're only open one day a week.
Because we're doing outs- work outside the office. If we're here and somebody shows up, we're absolutely helping them, we're not turning them away. But for the most part, Wednesday is our walk-in day. We've been doing that for four years. So people know, not everybody, but people know to come in on Wednesday. And I think there's been one time in four years where we had to emergency close that office on a Wednesday. One.
And the other thing we have to keep in mind too is that these are interim positions. You know, until we get somebody higher. I remember, maybe we want to cut those ties and then, and then.
I I think it's too too early to decide that yet.
Yeah, I think so.
You're always, you say it's interim.
Interim and.
And that's why we, setting it like that so that we can give ourselves six to eight months to really evaluate. You know, if if Carrie and Megan come back and say, oh, we can't, this is, this is too much. We're not, you know, then we'll pull that money back and then go, you know, with a different hire. Um, but right now they have the experience and this is a, this is, you know, a good staff in place. And so this is, this is option number one. And and not only do they have the experience, but the willingness, you know, like, hey, we'll do this. We can jump into this, we we can make this work. So so that's, and it will fall on, um, you know, obviously their their input that if it's getting to be too much, if there's too any concern. But but we feel pretty confident.
But I, yeah, okay, my, my, here's my number one goal. We work for the public. Do not forget that. Don't restrict hours, don't restrict. Public comes in, they have a request, we work for them. Uh, and we should not lose sight of that. And I'm afraid we, we very well could be in some circumstances and I.
And I think I mentioned this to Julie, my biggest concern is the public's best interest.
Exactly.
Well, it's always been ours. That's why we, our offices continue to take programs that were being let go by other departments so that we made sure that those services are still available to the public. Now, we've had environmental health here for a while, over thirty years, and there's definitely times we can go down to that office and we're not in there because we don't have a full-time secretary sitting there waiting for people to show up. We never have. A lot of offices, IT doesn't have somebody sitting there waiting. You know, so to to pay somebody to sit there just because somebody may decide to show up that time is not a a wise use of county taxpayer dollars. That's why we have set hours for passports. And if somebody shows up and we're there, we take care of them. And public health is getting a thirty-hour-a-week person to be there to answer those phones for public health. They're not answering calls for environmental health, for zoning, for passports. They're taking care of public health.
Well, I think right now it's it's a little early to be presumptuous of how many hours it's actually going to take until this gets up and going and figure out the kinks, you know, and if it becomes too much, then we have to look at that. But we can't look at that right now because you wouldn't know if it's too much, you know? So we just have to do another evaluation and.
Well, and you know, I think in the, you know, down the road, I see this as, you know, like, you know, the the quarters and the quarters and the sheriff have quarterly reports. We'll get reports from the public health department that we've never gotten before. And so, um, I mean, and you you've given reports so in the past. So I, I don't know, I think, I think it's, we can better control that than we have in the past been able to control it. That that's kind of one of the goals as well.
We'll have a better feel for the overall FTE and staff breakdown as well because there's never been a defined breakdown of how much time a person was spending on public health in the current, we just saw the funding.
Well, you have to have some flexibility because you don't know, there's some lot of unknowns.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely a lot of them, which we've had the last two years.
Yep.
And yet, and the assessment said that we needed to collaborate more with other agencies and counties. And you've had, you've been in contact with other counties as well and they're excited.
Yeah, it's that I'd say is a really exciting aspect of it. Now, obviously Carrie's collaboration already with, uh, Crawford County Environmental Health. We had a nice meeting, uh, with, uh, Kim Finner and the director of Crawford County Public Health, uh, Home Health and Hospice. Super excited to just jump in and whatever we can do to work on together. Um, Megan's already talked with, uh, Calhoun County and Sat County as well. So, um, there's, there, there's really an excitement and kind of a buzz with some of the neighboring counties like, ooh, we really want to work together on this or this. So, you know, and it can have the, a greater impact for for a broader population by working together. Well, I want to thank you for coming in and giving the presentation.
Usually don't manage that.
Yes, yes. So can we go ahead? We didn't know for sure, like, to post the position, um, because it's it's a new position, but it's not, it's from funding that's already been approved. So.
It just kind of your realm.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. No, just keep us on the loop.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to do my committee reports because I do have a meeting I don't want to. I had nothing last week, I have nothing this week. I had nothing last week, I have nothing this week.
Thanks.
Hey, guys, quick question for you.
Uh, I'll go next. Uh, last Tuesday, uh, CADC, the housing. In, uh, Carroll was a large discussion. Um, consumed most of the meeting. Uh, it was myself. Then on Wednesday, the, I went to WIWD in Holstein. Uh, Dennis Bush gave a pretty good presentation on what the legislative people are doing to help with the workforce. Side, um, nothing real earth-shattering there, just, uh, some small little subjects. Uh, we appoint, they appointed in, uh, the board previous to us. Uh, had two resignations, uh, they came with two very qualified people. In fact, one person was in the WIWD board in, uh, the Des Moines metro area that moved here and wanted to go on here. So they've got some experience coming in. It's not like they're, you have new person. So that'll be a workout real well for one. Uh, this week I have nothing and this is kind of a personal week for me. I will be gone. Uh, quite often this week.
I can go next.
Question really quick. Who, uh, does everyone want that PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yeah, just go ahead and send it to us. If you could, Ben, I think we can all download it and print what we need to and. Thank you. So last week, um, I had, um. Actually, I had a region five hazmat meeting that was. Originally, originally set up for the twenty-fifth, which is this week. And then it was moved to the nineteenth, and then they moved it back to the twenty-fifth. And so. And, and then I had, uh, the, um. The Board of Health meeting on Thursday. It was a very lengthy meeting. I mean, we scrutinized. What, where we're going and it took three hours. Um, it was a long meeting. It was a very beneficial meeting. I'm, and that's all I really need to say about that. Um, this week I was supposed to have that region five hazmat meeting. And it was just completely postponed this time. I guess we're having trouble getting people together. Yeah, they're going to do a strategic planning and they haven't quite got that done. The, the fire department does. So they're just passing it on to August. So we're not even going to have a region five hazmat meeting this week, this month. So, um. And that, I don't really have anything else this week as well. So, Jane.
Okay, uh, last week I was supposed to have, uh. Meet with the city of Ta- Townton with Zach and that got canceled. It seems like already canceled anymore. Um, and then on, I did have a ES Center board meeting on Friday that I attended by Zoom. Uh, again, counts receivables are very high. They were at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. When they reported last, or, uh, when they had made out their figures and they had thirty thousand come in the last day or two. But there was also another forty-five thousand added into it. So right now as of Friday, their count receivables are a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Which is current, pretty current, I'm within sixty days. Um, there was eleven kids in that on Friday, averaged ten point three four for the month. Uh, they have two kids that they are charging for restitution for damage that they've done to rooms. And again, uh, we went through, um, spent a lot of time talking about cars. We've got nine cars and they all range from, uh, the lowest mileage one is sixty-eight thousand. All the way up to two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five miles. And they are constantly on the go. So we are looking at doing some, um. Things there, probably possibly leasing another one or something, or buying one or two. Cause the two newest ones that we bought, they, they were twenties, they got, the one's got ninety-four thousand miles already. So, uh, we spent, then spent a lot of time on the budget. Uh, they, we did approve the budget. Uh, it's, uh, total expenditures is, uh. Nine hundred and thirty-four thousand. Well, yeah, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, we talked about the increase in the salaries and we didn't give them a five percent increase on the man director. Uh, she had comparables of all the state or other centers. And our, of course, ours has been underpaid for a long time. So we did give her that. So that was, uh, probably the most that we approved that budget and, uh, that was it. This week I have got, uh, Tuesday tomorrow night, I've got policy council meeting. And also I've got new opportunities board meeting on Thursday and then I guess I'm doing the radio and paper this week also.
Courtney.
So next week we will meet on Tuesday because of the holiday. I'll have, uh, GIS will have a quarterly report. And it looks like S D H is on the agenda.
GIS, we can kick down the road, but.
I kind of kicked her already because she sent me her report a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
And, um, I forgot to put it on.
Okay, that's fine.
We, um, she's had it done for several weeks, just so you know.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, that's really all I have right now. Um, I don't plan on there being a lot more. We may have some drainage assessments if the engineer gets that to me.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Ben, any comments online?
No comments online.
Thanks, Ben. I guess I'm in an order for agreement. So move. All those in favor say aye, aye, aye.